Okay, it's 7:00 PM and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. If I could ask Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Thursday, July 23rd, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertise instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, July 31st, 2020.
Thank you, may we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis will be a little late. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan? I saw her. Mrs. Sullivan, I'll give her a minute, okay. Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here. Thank you all. Okay, what we... What we will do now is when you see the flag appear on your screen, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance together. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, everyone, and welcome to our second special meeting of our District Road Back to School Committee. This is not the full group this time, but rather a board, a special board meeting to deal with those issues. So I want to lay out what our order is for tonight, just so we all know what this looks like. So the first, first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna take a straw vote on how we're gonna conduct our August 11 meeting. Then we will have a road back presentation by Dr. Gruccio and our administration. Sort of a synopsis, a roll-up view of what we had at our last meeting. Followed by the presentation, we're gonna do public comment. We will have public, followed by board and administration comment. We will not limit public comment. We want to hear everyone's comments. We want to hear everyone's questions. This is a very, very important meeting and a very, very important topic. So we will stay here as long as it takes, just as we did last week. If I see things are starting to really go long, we may take a recess so we can all stretch our legs if necessary, but we want to hear from everyone. So, and a couple of quick things. Always trying to recognize folks, so this week, I want to just give a shout out and thank Kevin Erdbay, Mike Sweeter, and Leanna Mullin, who pull this all together for us technically, week after week, make these meetings happen, and we're instrumental in all of our virtual learning and will continue to be. I also want to recognize the undisputed Dean of the Egg Harbor Township School District, Dr. Phil Hery, who is back with us, serving now as interim Assistant Superintendent during a time when we certainly need his wisdom and expertise. So, welcome, Phil. So now what I would like to do is circle back and take a straw vote on what we will do on August 11. And I, I do need to point out something that we just learned today. So, just this afternoon, the governor has decreased the amount of people who can be present at a public gathering to 25. So what that means for us is if we hold our meeting in Alder Avenue Boardroom, which I'm perfectly willing to do, we just have to understand that with just those of us who are on the dais, board members, administration, our student reps, we're almost at 25. So what we'd have to do is the public would have to participate with us virtually. So I just want everyone to understand that. Did I, did I get that correctly, Ms. Houck? Is that the executive order from today?
Yes, so from today, it's not officially an executive order yet that I have seen, but my understanding is it's going to be, and what has happened today is he reduced, the governor reduced indoor gatherings to 25% capacity with a maximum of 25 people per the room.
Okay, so I just want everyone to realize then, if we want to, if anyone wants to talk a little bit, that would be the nature of the meeting. It would just be us. We would have public participation virtually. Similar to how we're doing it now, having the public comment, view us and comment. Is there, is there any discussion or do we want to just go right to a poll? Anyone have thoughts?
This is Mr. Price. I just have a question. I think I have it. I Lou. What is the capacity of the Alder Avenue Boardroom right now? Like the fire department capacity? Usually there's a plaque in there. Maybe Sandra could chime in on this.
I'm not in the boardroom. I'm in my office, but we can definitely get that information for you. I can send that to you.
And that's a good question.
Right.
But I, I think what we're, we're limited to now is a total number limit. So in addition to what previously there was a percentage capacity, but right now, public gatherings are limited to 25 people. So we can have Carnegie Hall booked. Right, we can have Carnegie Hall booked, but as of today, we can only have 25 people. So other, other questions? I'm looking for hands. Ms. Gilbert Floyd is next, I believe.
I was just gonna say that I know the cafeteria was mentioned, but that still has to do with, we have, the number is 25 and it's not the capacity of the room, correct? So I think, I'm just saying that, okay, I believe that the, one of the main things was that we wanted, some of my board members wanted the public to be able to attend and that they had difficulty with the format of the board meeting virtually and they didn't understand or people didn't know what was going on, who was talking or how individuals voted. Is that, is that, was that kind of one of the senses of the concerns of why we were going back to public? I mean, opening up to, you know, having it in person? Because if that was the case, you won't be able to be present. I mean, that was one of the things I said. I think we'd have to limit the number of people.
Well, I think two, so two things. Two things that may be relevant. We couldn't really use that cafeteria anymore now that we're broadcasting our meetings because we don't have the microphones and the sound system there. Broadcasting our meetings was linked into the sound system. You all remember, we redid the boardroom. It's, it's wired for sound so that we can broadcast. We can't broadcast a meeting from the cafeteria. And, and you're also correct, Ms. Gilbert Floyd. We are limited to 25 people. Again, whether it's the cafeteria, whether it's Carnegie Hall or Yankee Stadium, we are now limited to 25 people, as I understand. So, if I'm understanding correctly, you know, I think I am and I...
If Facebook Live streaming, it wouldn't be appropriate either, would it, Ms. Houck? I mean, I don't know if that would be, because some people...
So I think we can stream, I, I think it's the idea that you don't have the microphones. So whether you're streaming through Facebook Live or through whatever service that our IT person, our IT department is utilizing, it's when you're in the cafeteria, even just a regular meeting in the cafeteria, there's an issue with microphones. There's a wish, issue with the wiring. So I think that's certainly a concern. You can possibly use Facebook Live. We've been going with the recommendation of our team just because this way we're able to broadcast it through our website, which is a secure platform and something that our IT department is recommending.
I just brought up Facebook on purpose because I just felt like that needed to be set out loud and I didn't know if there was an, I don't know if, you know, if there's another facility in our district that is wired for that type of situation, but I still think it defeats the purpose of the, with the 25 people.
Yeah, Mr. Price, I have a comment on that. I spoke with the deputy mayor last week and she extended the invitation where the Board of Education could come to the community center. Everything's in place, the cameras and everything, but again, like Pete just mentioned, it really wouldn't matter now if we can only have 25 people. So it's just, that was something that was mentioned. Yes, that was nice of the deputy mayor. I know, we appreciate that. And I did, I did convey that to Pete. Thank you.
That was nice and I, I do appreciate that, but again, we have, you know, more people that would need microphones. And again, we're right back to whether it's the community center or anyplace else. As I understand, the governor today, you know, it's 25 people. So, you know, remaining virtual, we do have the option of changing the way we broadcast our meetings to make it a tile view. In other words, so people would see the Brady Bunch as opposed to just seeing who's speaking. But we can also have the in-person meeting at the Alder Avenue Boardroom and broadcast it out, record it, and people can interact with us through technology. So those are our two options. I'm fine with having it at Alder. If that's what board members want to do, that's, that's perfectly fine. So why don't we straw vote it? And are there any other questions or comments?
I would like to add something. I know that Lou, during our last meeting, brought up doing in-person meetings again, once the students are back in school. That is still something that I'm comfortable with. Also, if the public can't participate in our live meetings, which was the reason why we wanted to go back to live meetings, I kind of feel like it defeats the purpose. Why should, we're all gonna sit in the boardroom with our masks on, six feet apart, whereas I feel like, I don't know, I feel like the meeting would be more comfortable for everybody. I would feel safer still doing it virtually.
And Pete, my, thank you, Amy, for quoting me. I want to be consistent with what, with what I've been saying the past couple of weeks. I think we should wait until we have the students back in school. I like that part of it. I think it's clear to everybody that schools are open and we're there at the same time. And now that the governor made this declaration today, I think you're right, Amy, but Amy just said about sitting there with our masks on compared to at least here, we're all being visible. And again, the parents can't participate. I'm willing to wait until schools, we are back in the schools and for our first public meeting. And I still have the concern, and I think all of you know this, are we really going to be able to open in September? That's a question still out there. I know things are still being discussed at the state level and I'd rather know if that's firm, that we can open and then we are doing our job in public.
Very, more comments or questions? Let's get to our straw vote so we can...
May I jump in there?
This, you know, we have a lot to do tonight. Sure.
This is Marita Sullivan. The reason, the main reason that I wanted to get back in person, even with our masks on, is because the board meeting runs much more smoothly. We don't have all the breaks with the technology and raising our hands and it just seems, you know, when I listen back to the meetings, invariably I find something that I never really heard. And I think it's just because we're not, I'm not totally engaged because I'm not right there, that even if it's just us, the meeting would run much more smoothly if we were all together. So that's my comment.
Just to react, I was engaged for five hours on last meeting, so, you know, I still think we do pay attention through the entire time since that's why we're here.
Right, I agree with that and I do pay attention, but somehow it just seems to, that, I don't know, I, maybe it's the continuity. I like things to run in a smooth pattern rather than all broken.
Okay, let's go ahead and poll the board then, Ms. Anaya.
Mr. Delabarka?
If the question, how's it phrase?
The question?
So the question is, we're going, we're gonna go meeting by meeting. So the question is, August 11, how will we have, will August 11 be in person or will August 11 be virtual?
I'm voting for, continue our virtual.
Mr. Ellis?
My computer's not working again, in person.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Continue with virtual.
Mr. Price?
This is Mr. Price. I would like to participate in person. That's my vote, but I still have a comment. By voting yes, I want to make sure that board members that aren't comfortable can still participate virtually. And I understand we did a quorum at the meeting location. I plan on being there to be part of the quorum, but I just want to make sure that any, any board members that aren't comfortable can still participate virtually. So it's yes with a clarification.
So yes to live? Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes to live.
Mrs. Summer?
I vote for virtual.
Mrs. Solagi?
Live.
Mrs. Byrd?
I also vote for live, however, with the caveat that Mike said that first, for board members who have reasons that they don't want to come in person, they can participate virtually.
Thank you.
And I vote for, I vote for live as well.
Majority is live, thank you.
All right, anything else on that before we move on? And we will have guidance out on how we're going to enforce all the various protocols that need to be in place beforehand. We do need to have a quorum in person, but if folks are uncomfortable, they can call in if they wish to do so. All right, so... Do we have any other issues on, anything else on meetings? I think we're ready to move along. So what I'd like to do now is just, I guess...
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Gilbert Floyd.
Yeah, as before, I didn't want to interrupt you, but before we get started, when you say you, anything addressing meetings? I just want to address the meetings in the sense of referencing what happened last week in reference to board members expressing their opinions and then being told not to express their opinion or no one asked them for it. I just would ask that, would those things get a little hairy like that if, maybe if you could step in? Or if we call, if someone's out of order, if you could just acknowledge that and to correct that person about, you know, board meetings and the way we behave and carry ourselves and address one another?
I, I do appreciate that, Ms. Gilbert Floyd, and I did do my best to keep us on track when we started discussing meeting protocol during Kim's presentation. I did do my best to bring us back. You know, there's always room for improvement, but I did do my best to bring us back and I will continue to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is just before I let Dr. Gruccio go ahead with her part of the presentation, I just want to start out with a couple of quick things. I, I want to thank everyone who participated on our larger Road Back Committee. That's our administration, who did a fantastic job and just so much hard work. I can't thank you all enough. That's board members, that's our teachers, that's our staff members, our students, our community members, everyone who's viewing and everyone who's viewing or listening tonight, whether live or recorded. Now I want to go into what is our purpose here tonight? Why are we here tonight? We are here tonight to vote on a plan. We have been directed by the State of New Jersey Department of Education to develop a plan and that plan must include at least some in-person instruction. We are required then to submit that plan to the county office this week for review and approval. I believe we've worked very, very hard at this as a district and we've put together the best plan we possibly could under these very difficult circumstances. I also want to emphasize that this will continue to be a living document. Things change every day. We had changes in guidelines just this afternoon from the governor. And so this will be a living document that will be able to accommodate changes in guidelines and conditions. Everyone, I understand, wants to know what's gonna happen, right? Everyone wants to know that. Everyone watching, everyone listening. And I want to acknowledge that I understand there are, there are many opinions. There are differing opinions over if and when we should be returning to in-person instruction. But I also want to stress that that decision will be made by the Department of Education and the Governor of New Jersey. As board members, we, we learn right off the bat and we're taught that our primary mission is student achievement, learning, our students' education. But as someone who came on the board right after Columbine, you soon realize that we really have two dual top priorities. One, of course, is student achievement, but at the very same time, it's the health, safety, and welfare of our students. Not only our students, but our teachers, our staff, and in this case, their family and loved ones because of the situation that we have in front of us. So both are top priorities, student achievement and health, safety, and welfare. And that is clearly reflected in our mission statement. Embrace, engage, and educate. Contains pieces of both of that. So having laid out why we're here, I want to thank everyone again for being here and I'm gonna turn the presentation over to the good doctor, Dr. Gruccio.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Castellano. Good evening, everyone. And Mr. Castellano, thank you for laying the foundation for us. I could not have said it any better. Very, very good job, well done. I'd like to thank everybody for joining us this evening in this culminating step of piecing the Road Back to School puzzle together for their Egg Harbor Township School District. I would be remiss if I did not take this time as well to thank everyone involved. From the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for embracing this endeavor and standing by me, standing by each other in formulating a plan. And we are nothing without each other and we are absolutely, absolutely EHT strong. So thank you again. I'd like to briefly highlight our journey over the last five months, in case you're just joining us, and I'll be brief. I'll start with school closure in March 16th, how our EHT school community engaged in the upside down and did everything possible to provide an equitable education to our students in this virtual world. We all quickly learned how to adapt to sudden change. Professional development was offered for our teachers, parents, and we all worked together to make it happen under these circumstances, under a world of what we call uncertainty. On June 26, we received guidance from the governor and the Department of Education. At least at this point, we got a little idea of what needed to be done in creating a plan for heading back to school. But this plan was still, or this guidance was still filled with a lot of unknowns, questions, and admission that not all the answers were known. I admit that these have been the most difficult times and at times frustration and stress enters the picture. But I've said all along, it's not a time to panic, but rather a time to prepare. And to prepare is what we did. As we say in Egg Harbor Township, it's time for the beaks up and the wings out. It's time to create a plan. So we, I huddled up my team, I shared the objective, and the game planning began. By June 29, the administrative team had the Road Back to School document reviewed and research began. We created a list of concerns and possible solutions. From there, we formed 11 subcommittees where over 800 stakeholders joined together to share ideas and concerns. And in the areas, they were in the areas of attendance, academic support, special education, athletics, elementary, middle school, high school scheduling, transportation, health and safety facilities, food services, and virtual learning. We also networked, I networked with fellow superintendents, the Atlantic County Executive Superintendent, the Atlantic County Department of Health, and our school physician. We brought, we read research from the CDC as well as the Academy of Pediatrics. We brought together research and stakeholders into one district Road Back to School Committee where representatives from the subcommittees were present along with the Board of Education. And here we heard pieces of all the committees, their feedbacks and ideas were brought together as we linked together a plan. And that was accomplished in a five-hour presentation on July 28. And if you're with us, you know, it was long, but it was intense and it was very engaging. This meeting was productive as it generated a framework for teaching and learning and it also produced excellent questions and concerns. From there, those questions and concerns were placed in a question and answer document, which could be found in the superintendent's corner on our website and is also shared in my district newsletter this week. This presentation produced that framework to be used for the reopening of the Egg Harbor Township Schools. The purpose of our meeting tonight, just as Mr. Castellano said, is to approve, is to approve a plan to submit to the Department of Education tomorrow. This is not the meeting to decide whether or not we're gonna open schools in September. As was stated, that's Governor Murphy's, you know, job and his message is loud and clear that we are to implement a schedule for the 2020 school year that includes in-person instruction in some capacity and provides public schools facilities for 180 days in accordance with NJAS 18A7F-9. This plan must include full remote learning. It must be in compliance with 6A32-8.3 where a student receives four hours of instructional contact per day, contact per day. And we must be prepared to shift to all virtual teaching and learning. This plan must contain a pandemic response team in each school, which we have formed, access to technology for all students, which we have done, a plan that entails social distancing, wearing of masks, hand sanitizing stations, and the cleaning and disinfection of services on buses and school buildings, all presented last week. And finally, the plan that includes logistics for marking for social distancing, procedures for ill children and staff, communication with the Department of Health, the serving of meals, washing of hands, recess, and physical education in accordance with state statutes, health and safety measures. I will add, while we know that we will be, we will not be submitting the most perfect plan, we know that we have to submit something for review. And I think we have a great document, a thorough document, that meets the guidelines and recommendations for the Road Back to School. From there, after the submission, we'll wait for the New Jer, New Jersey Department of Education's feedback, but in the meantime, we'll work together in refining our plan and be receptive to any suggested changes from the department. Excuse me. Tonight, I propose a plan that is in accordance to the guidance set forth by the Governor of New Jersey and the Department of Education, and it provides a framework for teaching and learning when it's time to open our schools. This framework provides our parents and teachers a resource to make choices and to personally plan for themselves and their families for September or whenever we, the school opens. This plan, as you know, is hybrid. We have in-person and virtual option. We have an all-virtual option. And we are ready to go virtual at any time. So therefore, I ask for your support to submit this plan to the New Jersey Department of Education. Our plan after the submission is to follow up with a survey to, to parents based on each one of the students they have in their household. And this data will provide us information for further planning, such as building schedules and bus routes. Okay, at this time, I'd like to share a Google slide that will show what we have done and our plan. And if I can just present that right now from the IT end and to show that we are EHT ready. I think Leanna's behind the scenes tonight. There we go. Okay, so this presentation just highlights some of the things that I said about our subcommittee meetings and some of the statistics that in just 72 hours, 800 people responded. And last week, we had a five-hour meeting where 535 live viewers tuned in to listen to our planning. Next slide. Following the special meeting of last week, the video meet was posted on the website and posted on Channel 97. The presentations were uploaded... The presentations were uploaded and embedded, and the question and answers were created by the administration and posted online. So we have a little checklist here that we are hashtag E H T ready. We have our one-page game plan flyer that we're going to share. We're going to have daily infographics for health and safety practices that we're going to share with our students and our community and our teachers, our whole school community. We're going to highlight our local support services, provide a look inside of what, what a day would look like from getting on a bus to riding to school or being dropped off at school, entering a school, being in school, and then exiting. So we'll be using photos and videos to share that, and also we'll provide weekly and daily calendar announcements. Next, this is our game plan in a one-page document. It's a digital flyer, so after we're finished this presentation, we'll be able to show you that you can link, or you could click on the different links on here, and it'll give you the information. Next. This is an example of a daily infographic that would go on our social media to help start to begin educate, educating our students. And a lot of research went into this. As you can see, we learned and Leanna brought it to my attention just the other day, hey, did you know that an eagle's wingspan is six feet? So we are ready to depict and show that be an eagle and be six feet apart. So it's, it'll be really cool for the younger kids as well. Go ahead, change. Here's some other infographics that we have prepared, I am E H T ready, showing the importance of washing hands and wearing a mask. And again, we'll be, not only we'll be showing these flyers, but we'll have videos to show how to put on a mask, wear a mask, keep on a mask. Next. An example of our support services and programs that we will share through social media and can be found on the district newsletter every week. Next. Okay, going through our checklist, important to stay informed. Follow our district's social media on Facebook and Instagram. Check out my newsletter and visit our website regularly. I cannot stress that anymore. Our website is filled with information and it's filled with updated information. Next slide. This shares the text message tool that we have. When you get a message from 67587, that's from Egg Harbor Township School District, and that will give you important information such as a, a letter that may go out by me or an announcement from a principal or other district official. Okay, so we are E H T ready. We are going to be using that, that term hashtag E H T ready. Or we're sharing here that the road back letter and question and answers are available for your review and our game plan, the one-page flyer. Now, Leanna, if you could just click on that so we could see that in a bigger format, that'll give the board what I am proposing all-in-one document. Or do I do it? If we could just see that one-page flyer, I'll use that as my presentation. To the board and my proposal for our schedule, which she finds that can get set up, it will, the, the schedule and framework would be Mondays, the whole district would be virtual. On Tuesday and Wednesday, there will be one group, as you can see right in the center, Group A, the black team, would come on Tuesday and Wednesday, and Group B, the silver team, on Wednesday, on, on Thursday and Friday. We put our safety measures on there, and then these certain sections about bus transportation, there's a link that you could click on. There's information for talents, there's information for food and dining services, and athletics and activities. Okay, all right, so with that, there, there's also a link that shows, that brings you right to the letter that I put out just yesterday that explains what we have been doing and the question and answer section. So all the questions and answers are grouped by categories. One, it begins with what our overall plan looks like, and then all the subsections, the subcommittees, and all the questions that we received, whether they were from subcommittee with parents, stakeholders, or from the board meeting and/or from the board meeting on July 28th. So this is a living document. The more questions we get, the more we will add. As Mr. Castellano said, things are, it's, are changing, things are fluid. So some of the answers to these may change based on some of the changes that the governor makes. But right now, this is all updated information. So with that, Mr. Castellano, I proposed this framework, this hybrid, this virtual learning option. And I think he hit it right on the nose when he said our mission statement encompasses all this. What we did was we embraced the community, we listened to their needs. We engaged them in this process with us along the way, and we were able to provide a relevant plan. And now we must educate. We must educate the community on health, safety of this plan. We must educate the community on the virtual learning, teaching and learning piece of this plan. We must include our parents, our staff, and ultimately educate our students as that is very, very important. That is the business we're in. While we want to keep everybody health, healthy and, and safe, our business is to educate. So we are looking to be able to do that the best that we can in the situation that we are living in right now and underneath the guidance and the criteria that is set forth by the Department of Education. So with that, Mike, that concludes my presentation, and I'll turn the meeting over to you if there's any questions or if you want to proceed with the, thank you.
Thanks very much, Dr. Gruccio. Great, great job as well, and with the tech support behind it, very well done. And, you know, again, that is just, what you saw was just the, the evidence, the artifacts of all the hard work that went into our plan. So I want to do, before I go to public comment, so we'll, we'll follow our normal order. We're going to have one public comment period. We're going to go public comment, then board members administration, and then we will vote on the three items we have to vote. But before I go public comment, I did invite our, our two student reps, Ethan and Gabby. So I, I want to open it up to, to them if there's any, anything that they would like to add to this. They are our student reps, and, and this is a, a very important topic. So student reps, the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone.
If you'd like.
I think we prepared some, both of us prepared a little something to say.
Very good. I'll defer to you.
Um, hi, everyone. I know that COVID-19 has changed a lot for the students in our district, and I'm sure that most of us are ready to come, come back to school and go back to our daily routines as long as it is safe. And I know that we're all working hard behind the scenes to make it work and to have a safe school year. As the school year approaches, I also know that many students and parents are wary about returning to school and how hybrid is going to work. I know that last year's online school was a new process for everyone, especially administration, teachers, parents, and students. And it took some time to get used to, but I hope that this year, things will be different. Although I am grateful for last year's efforts, I hope that we will be able to improve by making sure that we take things both like seriously, as seriously as we did in school and online school. I hope that we students participate more and realize that we all have to work together to make this work. And I'm more than ready to return to school, and I'm looking forward to how everything will work this fall. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you both.
I think Ethan has something to say too.
Do you have something as well, Ethan? Okay.
Yes, I, I made a little myself. So my name is Ethan, so I know I've met a few of you, but my name is Ethan Son. I'm a senior, like Gabby, at the high school. And obviously, COVID-19 has created some insurmountable, or seemingly insurmountable challenges for us as a district, and especially when it comes to, to education. I'm beyond proud and grateful for the efforts that our district has put forward, and I'm beyond proud to be a part of E H T. I understand that online learning has been a very large obstacle to overcome, and I hope going forward, we see it improved and we see more participation in it. But the students of the Egg Harbor Township School District, to be frank, want to go back to school. Safety, of course, should be and is the number one priority. And if it is concluded that it would be unsafe to go back to school, that should be the course of action. But I firmly believe that it is paramount that students go back to school in order to facilitate not just a thriving community, but a thriving school district. I'm humbled to be able to speak for my peers here tonight, but I also feel a responsibility incumbent upon me to state how desperately we want to go back to school. We miss our friends, we miss our teachers, and we miss pursuing our passions and our interests. As long as we are complying with health regulations, I firmly believe that schools should reopen. And I firmly believe in our constructed plan that we as a community so diligently worked on. I'm confident that light is at the end of the tunnel. I'm confident that normalcy, no matter how small, is ahead, and I'm confident that we will navigate this challenge together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan and Gabby. Very good job, both of you. Very well thought out, and you're both very good public speakers as well. So we're glad, very glad to have you with us, and we appreciate your perspective. So at this time, we're going to go to public comment. We ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. As you know, we cannot discuss personnel or litigation. We will try our best to answer questions. It may be that there's a complicated question that has a lot to it, and one of our administrators may have to get back to you with the full answer. On the topic tonight of Road Back, we'll make sure that question goes into our compilation of questions so that everyone can see the answer.
Okay, you're live streaming. Name and address, please.
Marion R. Barczak, 115 Lexingtoni Drive.
And your public comment.
Okay, I have three things. I went over to the questions this morning, oh, not this morning, like an hour before this meeting. And I have a question about the 24-hour fever-free. I've seen another district that has a, they don't do the 24-hour fever-free. If you have twen, if you have a fever, you have to get tested, and you can't come back until the test is negative. Now, considering it's COVID, then we should be following that same suit so everybody else can stay safe. Another thing is, where are the students, they have out, like, where are the students eating in the elementary school? Are they eating in the classroom? Are they eating in the cafeteria? If they're eating in the classroom, usually the classrooms are not free. However, there are students that only eat nut, creams, like almond butter, nut, another color, and peanut butter. What happens to those students if they can't eat in their classroom? And another thing, is every grade that willing to be doing the last thing for figuring out the schedule? Because it only shows high school, it didn't show where everybody else is going to be following. And it didn't state that everybody's following the same thing. That's about it.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, one more thing. Sorry, one more thing. Are we 25% or are we 50%? You guys haven't really, yeah, you gave us the A, A, B, B, but are we 25%? Because considering Atlantic County is now a hotspot, we should be 25% capped instead of 50% capped. I, I don't see how you're going to fit 12 kids in a classroom in the elementary school level safely without them being too close to each other in those small rooms that they're going to be in. That's a 50%.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a couple of specifics. If we have those readily available, we'll go ahead. If we need to get back, we can get back.
Okay, Mr. Castellano, regarding the, the fever-free and our, our policy, that would be something that we are willing to, you know, we will look into. Regarding number two, eating and dining, we are implementing a grab-and-go plan, so we do not anticipate using cafeterias. Three, the question regarding schedules, why we did share that the high school example, we do have schedules for middle school and elementary school. Just like the high school is different than, you know, our current middle school and high school schedules if we were to open in regular times, these schedules are different. And they start at different times and end at different times. And four, regarding 25 to 50% capacity, we have measured our desks right now for the 50% capacity, and those desks were measured six feet apart, and we can fit in some of our classrooms 12 to 14 students, depending on the size of the classroom. But we are in the process of those logistical matters, matters right now. We have custodians and our principals and assistant principals in our classrooms each day this week participating in the measurement of, of those, of those desks. Okay, so again, written, a lot of this, you know, is, we're still in the process. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, as, and as I understand it, we are at 25% now by virtue of executive order unless and until that changes.
That is really up for debate. I don't know if our attorney would like to, to weigh in, but we are still, we still not have, we still have not heard specifics regarding 25% and 50% from the governor.
That is one of, regarding school. That is one of those issues that is back and forth from county to county. There is one school of thought that the indoor 25% is for gatherings, and that school is obviously not a gathering, it is school, so it doesn't apply. However, there are executive county superintendents throughout the state saying that it does apply. And there are other executive county superintendents in the state saying it does not apply. That is my understanding. Again, I'm just hearing this from various other attorneys throughout the state as we all talk and determine, does it apply or doesn't it apply? My understanding is, in Atlantic County, the answer from the executive county superintendent's office is that that is the executive order. But I believe, and Dr. Gruccio, correct me if I'm wrong, they are still waiting to see if anything is going to change because it's very early in August, and we still have a whole month before school actually starts for them to change guidance, change executive orders, change other items.
Correct. And what I am presenting is in line with the networking that I have done with the other superintendents.
Good, thank you.
We do have another public comment.
So our next question.
Okay, you are live streaming. Name and address, please.
Candace Ortiz.
And your address, please.
210 Fillmore Avenue.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Um, my public comment is, I just wanted to know if they could confirm if virtual learning is an option to fully do virtual learning? Or is it only the hybrid proposal that they were speaking of earlier is the only option?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I believe the answer is that at, our plan does allow for students to opt for the all-virtual option. Am I correct?
Yes, that is a governor's order that we must have a plan for students to opt out of in-person learning and go to all-virtual.
Very good. Thank you. Take our next question, please.
Uh, Mr. Castellano, I have a caller labeled Egg Harbor Township student, and that's how they want to identify themselves. So if you guys are okay with that, I'll let them livestream.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, you are live streaming. Go ahead with your public comment.
Hello?
Yes.
I'm upcoming sophomore and I'm in top coming freshman. And we are in the policy members of the Generation Ratified, a group that tries to protect the equal rights amendment of equality. We're calling the issue of racism in EHT, where there is a lack of diversity in the staff that I teach with. And so we feel like that is a important issue. And when our examples of racism in EHT, they are overlooked and misunderstood because of the lack of diversity and misinformation that is being taught to us. And then a personal story is, I have been calling the N-word and I have heard the N-word being used a lot.
And this is a story from an anonymous student. Growing up in school, I had constant remarks about me being Asian. My eyes, I'm supposed to be smart, using three different words, Chin, 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 Chong. And Asians eat dogs and cats. Even if you're a freshman, I still feel these remarks, how to connect it. But I think that one way to make sense of inclusion, social and discrimination, would be to establish a culture of inclusion and respect for diversity values. And schools could also monitor places with prevention of supervision to prevent bullying in spaces. And this is with new discussions of our ways of doing it in classrooms and accurate history lessons. Students, since some of the information that we learn is not exact or correct. And students or schools could also partner up with community organizations to fight issues involving racism and equality. And another thing would be cultural constituency training, which will allow students to embrace and celebrate their own and other cultures and race, which would then benefit everyone by increasing positivity and diversity. I'm eager and honored to collaborate with you, I use to settle and fix this racism issue with EHT.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for those comments. We did have trouble with the audio. I know I couldn't make those, make the comments out myself. But what I would encourage you to do, really, the best way to do something like this is really to give us your names and address. I didn't want to preclude any discussion tonight because the topic is so important. But I would urge you to take up your concerns with your building principals. And, but thank you, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Castellano, if I may add, first of all, thank you, students. But I want you to know, as superintendent of the school, I do not in any way tolerate any racism in our school district. I encourage you to reach out to me and share your concerns as well as your ideas. Because then through that audio, I heard that there were some suggestions and concerns. I also want to reassure you that I have reached out to a student group and was in communication with that group today. And we are planning, now I don't know if this is you or not because you didn't share a name, but we have a meeting set up with myself and building administration to listen to student voice and listen to concerns. I've also have a request from a faculty member. And he and I are going to get together to have a discussion about student feelings in our school so that we are prepared that when we go back to school and we're in the school buildings, that everyone feels a comfort level. And that any of these feelings that you have right now are dispelled. And we make it clear that, once again, we do not tolerate racism in our school district. So thank you very much.
And Mr. Castellano, I have to apologize. I was picking up the next caller when you had mentioned about the last caller being anonymous because I do have another one on the phone. I just need some guidance, please. I missed what you said.
Okay. All right, so I really think it's best if folks will give us a name and address. Tonight's a very important evening, so I'm not going to preclude a comment. But I'm going to ask for a name and address going forward, please.
Okay. So this is a Carper Township public comment. You are now live streaming. We are going to ask for a name and address, but we will not preclude you from making a comment. Would you like to give your name and address?
Oh, I don't.
Go ahead with your comment. You can go ahead with your comment. You're live.
Name and address.
Okay, but you are livestreaming. We are allowing you to go ahead and make a public comment, so you can go ahead with your comment.
My comment, my thing is, I can set my kids to opt for, the school is from nine to 12. I mean, I work, I'm a lot.
Excuse me, is this a parent talking?
I can't say nothing, my, my surrounding kids, not in the canyon.
This is a parent, I think. She did not identify herself as a parent. She did not want to say anything except she wanted to make a comment.
If, Mr. Castellano, my suggestion would be, if we are having adults make comment, they have to give their name, at least their name if they don't want to give their address.
Yes, I, and that.
Okay, so ma'am, you don't have to give your address, but you do have to give your name for public comment, please.
Hi, Maria.
A full name, please. No comment, okay.
All right, we're trying our best. We're doing our best, folks. Let's go to our next caller. And we're gonna, again, just, we're gonna ask for a name and address. I'm trying to keep all of these, I want to have all voiced. But maybe we should read through again our rules for public comment. We ask for everyone to give your name and address for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes. We do not discuss personnel or litigation in a public setting. And in addition, if the topic is complicated, it may be necessary for a member of our administration to get back to you with the answer. So with that, going forward, we're going to stick to those rules. Go ahead with the next call.
Okay, name and address, please. You are livestreaming.
Mary Gary. My address is 117 Poplar Avenue. I have two questions. The first one is, if you opt for virtual at some point in the year, can you switch, say we go virtual for the entire year, can you switch to the in-school at some point during the academic year? And the second is, if we do go virtual or if we go to the hybrid, what supports are there for the special ed student? Which was one of the more lacking things when we suddenly had to go virtual during the last academic year.
Thank you.
Mr. Castellano, would you like me to answer that?
Okay.
Yes, yes?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Gary. Yes, there is an option for the switch. I encourage you to go to our list of question and answers. It talks about how that would be done if you are virtual and you're coming back into live. It would be done by marking period and then vice versa. If you are live and you need to go virtual, you are to contact your building principal. Regarding special ed, I really want to refer you to the question and answer section because there's a plethora of questions and answers regarding special education. A lot of them came out of last week's planning meeting. But yes, special education is addressed. There's information about IEPs and related services. And if you have any questions after that, feel free to give me a call or email. Thank you.
Okay, we ready for the next caller? This is public comment. Please make your name and address, please.
My name is Crystal Longnickel. Address is 303 Fulton.
Go ahead with your comment.
Yes, I have a few questions because I've been trying to follow along, but it's just a lot of information being thrown at us, which is understandable. So I just need like a synopsis. One of my children has severe asthma. She cannot wear a mask. What accommodations are being made for children who can't wear a mask? But honestly, with the virtual learning, did not flourish. She needs that accountability of being in a building and meeting with a teacher. So what accommodations are being made for children like that? I also noticed in the chart that you made that it talks about children in high school, which is what she's going to, is going to have, they're going to get their lunch at the end of the day. So what does that, the in-school hours look like then for middle school and high school students on the days that they're in school? And then finally, I have my other child who's in middle school, who has a learning disability and an IEP, who again needs a very strict structure. What accommodations are being made for children like her? So that way, when I'm at home, I can make sure she's getting the same kind of help and the same instruction and staying on task. So that way, she's getting the most out of this upcoming school year. I mean, I will say that the teachers that my kids had this past year were amazing with everything that happened. They helped keep us informed. They did very great. Patrick, who is not on the group, but I believe he's in one of the groups, he's really helped keep us informed of what's going on. Us that, you know, can't watch five-hour meetings, has helped try to keep us informed with everything. But, so those are the questions I have. So I mean, you guys, it's phenomenal, but these are the questions that I have for a child with, you know, a health problem that prevents mask wearing and a child with an IEP.
Thank you, Krista. We ready for the next caller? State your name and address, please.
Hi, Melissa Axelson, 201 Easton Court. I just had one question for the family to choose the all-virtual option. The teachers that the students will get, will it be, that, will that teacher have just all virtual students? Or will it be a mix of in-person and virtual students? That was all.
Okay, thank you. And looking at my screen, I don't see Mr. Castellano. He may have dropped off the call. We'll just say thank you, and administration can get back to these parents or if you want to respond.
I'm sorry, Shonda, I was waiting for the president's direction, whether you wanted me to answer the question before. For the caller prior to the last caller, there were questions about special education students, students with disabilities wearing masks. We will get back to you. We do have provisions for that, again, in the question and answer section. But I do encourage you to speak to your case manager and also to Ms. Semet, who's the supervisor of nurses. And also, we have Mr. Santilli on the call, who's overseeing special education right now. So we'll get your name and we can speak to you more direct with the specifics of those questions and answers. And if I just have a recap of the last question, I think the last question had to do with BERT is the plan? Does the plan have to do with virtual and in-person? Was that the question, Shonda? Shonda cannot hear me.
Dr. Gruccio, it's Mrs. Byrd. The question was, if the, if a person chooses the all-virtual option, will the teacher be specifically teaching just the virtual students? Or will it be a mix of virtual students and in-person students as well?
Okay, thank you very much, Vice President Byrd. I appreciate that clarification. We have Ms. Moss on the call with us this evening. And this is a conversation we just clarified this afternoon regarding virtual teaching and learning. So Ms. Moss, could you just weigh in, just superficially, in terms of the virtual, in-person, and all-in-virtual?
So as the plan stands right now, our students who will be virtual will be with classroom teachers who will have both hybrid and virtual students assigned to them. As Dr. Gruccio mentioned earlier, we are sending out a survey to get more information and data. But we feel to keep the transition smooth, whether we are transitioning from hybrid to virtual and back, it's important that we have all students cohorted with a classroom teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Moss.
Very sorry, my internet cut out. I think I'm back. I feel like I'm back. These things happen.
Okay, are we ready for our next caller?
Yes, please.
Okay, you are livestreaming. Name and address, please.
George Shaw, my internet. Hi, this is Janelle Eakin, 122 Bridle Pass Drive. I have a few questions. One of my questions is, temperature checks. If this, I was confused, maybe I missed it. If there's a full day at school, are we going to have temperature checks throughout the day? Because people are notorious for giving Tylenol. I hope not now, but people have to go to work. My next question is, I'm sure there's not an answer yet, and I'm waiting, that's fine. Buses, will they be staggered? And if you choose to drive your child to school, will drop-offs be staggered? Also, is PPE going to be provided for people and, again, staff and students that may not have the availability to get it? My other question is disciplinary actions. Kids may not be used to the mask. I know my own children have asked, are they in trouble? Is it all just water? Is there going to be some sort of social-emotional curriculum to deal with that? Also, is this plan based off of 25% or 50%? And my other thing, the curriculum that we use, it sounds just simple now, and a lot of that is small group intervention and small groups and centers. Is the curriculum changing now because of the situation and maintaining social distance? And then my last question, should we be calling the superintendent of schools? Or should we be calling the assistant superintendent if we do feel that there is some sort of segregation or racism within the school community? If I had a situation and I contacted the assistant superintendent, should I have heard also from the superintendent? Thanks, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a lot there, and we'll do our best to address what we can.
Okay, I'll address them. Tell me if I missed anything, but regarding PPE, we have followed the governor's orders. His guidance came out today, and it was in line with what we said last week. Students will be asked to bring PPE in, which would be their mask and a hand sanitizer to self-protect. But if they do not have it, the school will be able to provide it to staff and students. Regarding our buses, they will be staggered just as they are staggered now. We are looking at logistics about drop-off and pickup. We know that there will be an influx of cars that are dropping off students. So between our security and our assistant superintendent who oversees facilities, we will be working on those logistics with the principals. Regarding social-emotional learning curriculum, we have had a social-emotional learning curriculum in place. Our resources have been shared in my district newsletter as well as our social media sites. We have that, we covered that piece in our presentation last week under the academic supports. Mr. Bud Smith has led that committee, and we have some great ideas in place for social-emotional support. Right now, our plan is at 50% within the next week after our submission. And if it comes back and the governor says, no, you have to go 25%, we presented that last week, that we are ready to go 25% capacity, which means students would be coming to the school one day per week. Regarding our curriculum, we will be sticking with our Fanta-Senpanell curriculum and our small group instructions based on the workshop model. That will still all stay in place. We have been providing professional development for our teachers to deliver that in a virtual setting. We've also had discussion about how we're going to use that day, virtual day for all regarding our small group sessions. As you know, our virtual learning plan in the spring provided a time for that. So we will, we will be incorporating. Janelle, remember you from your days in high school? Yes, you are following the proper chain of command. I know you spoke to Mr. Santilli today. He did share the, you know, the nature of the phone call with me. So yes, I encourage anyone who has any questions and concerns to get in touch with the building principal. One, if it provides, if it, your question pertains to the building itself, so the chain of command is in effect. An assistant superintendent is probably easier to get a hold of. And once they have that conversation with you, they'd absolutely share it with me. But then again, my door is always open. So if you feel that you need, there's something that you were not satisfied in your conversation today with Mr. Santilli, you know, you can reach out to me. Oh, temperature checks, temperature checks, I see that big on my page here.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Semet is with us this evening, so Ms. Semet, who's the supervisor of nurses, can you share, please, about those temperature checks?
Sure, we're in constant communication with Pat Diamond from the Atlantic County Department of Health, as well as our school physician. We will adhere to any of their protocols in regard to temperature checks.
Very good, thank you guys. No, there's a lot there, a lot of questions.
Okay, we have another caller.
Next caller, please.
Okay, you are live streaming, name and address, please.
My name is Paul Secora, 108 West Kennedy Drive.
Go ahead with your public comment.
So my question is, I'm a healthcare provider in a private township, I work closely and have to work closely with some COVID patients, so I don't know how serious this is. So my question is, why don't we wait a month or two, and see what happens with other local schools? Why are we in such a hurry?
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that, and you know, just to repeat what we've said earlier, the decision whether and when to return to in-person learning will not be made by local boards, it's going to be made by the Department of Education and the governor. What we're doing tonight is we are voting on a plan to allow for in-person instruction, but we are not making that decision this evening, we are voting to submit a plan. So we'll go to our next question, and unless anybody has anything else to add, we'll go to our next question.
There is no caller in the queue at this time, Mr. Castellano. We will leave this up just for a minute, and see if anybody calls in. It's been showing for about 30 seconds now, we'll give it another 30, just in case anybody I think it's safe to proceed, Mr. Castellano.
All right, I want to thank everyone who called in with questions or comments, we do appreciate it. This is an important part of the process, and you know, we tried our best to answer and respond. If folks still have questions or concerns, please contact us, and you know, again, this is a part of a process that's going to be ongoing. So with that, at this point, I will take comments from board members, please.
Hi, Pete, I have a question, actually, I have a few questions. So my first concern is, when a student chooses all-virtual learning, and they're going to have the same teacher that is teaching all-virtual, in addition to having a classroom, I just feel like that's a lot to put on our teachers. I know that our teachers are amazing at what they do, but I just feel like that is just double the work for teachers, and are they really going to be able to focus all of their energy, are they going to be able to divide their energy into those virtual kids, as well as those kids that are in the classroom? It's just a lot of work for them.
I think that's, you know, fair, fair question.
Yes, it's a fair question, and one that we are exploring this week, as we are creating that, that virtual teaching and learning plan. Again, Ms. Moss is with us, we had some in-depth communications today regarding this, and it's something that we are looking to, to study, to research, and to roll out, if you will, with a teacher group just with Wednesday, so for more discussion. So Ms. Moss, could you just give a preliminary insight on what we, what we talked about today?
Yeah, Amy, we completely agree. Our concern is kind of just being able to be fluid, and the idea of helping our instruction not feel like it's getting turned upside down, like it did in March. So we're looking at different ideas of how we can set up our instruction and plans from September, whether we're virtual, working with hybrid, if students, you know, are choosing to, into virtual from the hybrid classroom. So we are going, as Dr. Gucio just mentioned, we're going to meet with some teachers on Wednesday, and kind of talk about this, and try to get some feedback. We've taken all the feedback that we've gotten out of those subcommittees, we had a lot of great feedback from our virtual learning committee, from parents, and we met with teachers separately first as well, to try and figure out how we can, you know, work smarter and not harder, but more importantly, provide our teachers with time and professional development around areas of instruction that will allow for best practice, and also allow us to move within those different arenas a little bit easier. So we're hoping that through those meetings this week, we'll have a clearer idea to share with you really soon.
So just kind of piggybacking, piggybacking off of that, are, do you have, I'm assuming you're going to have teachers that aren't comfortable coming back into the school for whatever reason, will those teachers be given the opportunity to work maybe all virtually with those students?
So we've had conversations about everything, and again, that's something that through the surveys, we'll be able to have a better estimation. You know, as you move up into the grade six to 12, certification becomes an issue. So I would say that everyone has brought that to our attention as an administrative team, and we've been looking at every possible way to use everyone to the best of the ability within all of these different models. In an ideal world, yes. So we'll continue to explore everything, and like I said, hopefully be able to report back with more detail, once we meet with those stakeholders, and have a better idea of what, what we can do that will serve our students the best.
Okay, thank you, and I also have one other question, I know that I sent this question in, and it was about the possibility of staggering the start times between some of the schools, where the students are starting at the same time, so if I have a child in the high school, and then one in upper-middle school, and I don't want my child to ride the bus, I would like to pick them up, how am I going to be at two places at one time? And I know that you'd mentioned, Dr. Gucio, that the building principals are going to be working something out, do you have any insight as to what the possibilities are with that?
To answer your question, I don't have insight if there's going to be change, or you know, what they're doing logistically yet, because they've all been directed, and they gave that direction from Dr. Herry today, to perceive that they're planning, but we are in a situation currently, where we do have middle school and high school on the same time schedule, seven, eight, and then nine through 12, and we do have parents currently who drop kids off at the middle school, and drop kids off at the high school, and they do the pickup the same way. So, you know, I could reach out to those parents and see how they, you know, plan their mornings for that journey, either down, older, referring one into the high school and back again, but we are, we currently do have that situation. So regarding start times, we're looking to start our schools staggered, if you will, by levels, elementary, middle, Miller, and high school, and that they would end the same way, in staggered fashion. But you're right, there is the commonality between seven, eight, and the high school schedule, which we currently do have when we are in a normal mood.
Right, I'm just hearing, you know, because a parent may, more parents may want to opt out of busing, will there be more traffic? It's going to be more stressful getting from one school to the other, and I know, you know, from experience, if you're not there to pick up your child, they're going to put your child on the bus, correct?
Not if you opt out, and particularly in this circumstance, where we would know that you wouldn't want your child on the bus because of the COVID situation, that wouldn't happen. So yeah, so thank you for that feedback, because that definitely would be put in, in our planning, and I will absolutely share that with our principals, but we will refine this process and get back to you with that. Thank you.
Okay, Amy, you're good? Then I'll see any other board members.
Yeah, this is Mr. Price, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is Mr. Price, am I coming through?
We got you, go ahead, Mike.
I'm on my iPhone, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, that I was coming through okay. I have two questions. The first question I have is regards to all-virtual learning, the registration process. I've been approached by quite a few people that are going to be going all-virtual, and I just want to make it clear tonight, again, what is the process to register to go all-virtual? I clicked on the flyer, but it didn't go to any kind of a link. So what do people need to do, as of right now, that are going to be going all-virtual? Do they need to call in? Do they need to go to the website? Do they need to fill out any particular forms? How many have we have registered at this point for virtual? Maybe you have some numbers on that. But I guess to sum it up, go over the procedure again, of what parents and guardians need to do as of tomorrow to register virtually. So we want to, that's the first question I have, and I'll stand by for an answer.
I don't know.
Did I, did I come through? Did I come through with the?
Were you okay?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Did the audio come through okay?
We can hear you, Mr. Price, yes.
I have the one question that I heard regarding opting out. Is that right, opting out of in-person and going into virtual? Can you just restate that?
Yeah, let me, I'm on my cellphone.
It's okay, I can hear, I just want, I need to refine the question.
Yeah, I, yeah, I want to know, what is the procedure for a parent or guardian to register their student all-virtual? Do they go online? Do they call on the phone? Do they, how is that done?
Right, Mr. Price, that is coming, first, it's going to, we're going to put out a survey, to see who's interested in all, all virtual learning, and then we will get in touch with that group, and give them the process as to how they will register. From what I understand, it has to be a communication with, with the school district in writing by the parent. So we will have more information to come on that as we get through this process, but first, what goes out is the survey to see who wants to do what, and then we'll be in touch with those selected groups.
Okay, so obviously, we don't have anybody registered for all-virtual at this point, it's too early.
No, not yet, no. But, no, we're just waiting for the plan to get, to get approved, and then the next steps will come.
Got it, I'm a little ahead of myself then, but thank you.
I have a question, please, Mrs. Sullivan.
Those questions do come up, and I just, I have one more question, while I have the mic. When are we going to return to our full-board policies? I think this needs to be something that should be done before we return to school. We need to get our policies back in place again, do you have an idea when we're going to do that?
I don't want to speak for Mrs. Santilli, but I believe there's a meeting this Thursday.
And that's when we'll go about putting the school policies back in place? Right now, we're on emergency, where we waived the policies, but, but when are we going to put the policies back in place again?
Well, I'm going to ask Mrs. Howe to weigh in, because we are in a state of change right now, I don't know if all our original policies will be able to go back into place. So Mrs. Howe, could you just weigh in on how that's all going to work out for the board as we move forward?
Thank you.
Yes, as discussed, that resolution is really just to protect the board, because there are so many policies that we are, just by the very nature of not being in-person, not able to follow. And for example, the transportation piece, the, you know, academics, the class schedule, all of these various things that we're just not able to follow. So one of the things that we can do, and I can certainly discuss this at the policy committee, and then Mrs. Gilbert Floyd can report it out at the work session about the options, but my suggestion is, the way it's written is, that's in place, as long as we're in this state of emergency, to really protect the district, so there's nothing that we miss, or nothing that we're violating our own policies, because we didn't realize it's out there, and contrary to what we're doing, because of this hybrid world we're living in right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike, I saw Mrs. Sullivan's hand next.
Yes, hypothetically, once we get the list of, the list of parents that want to opt out, and the students that are in the class, if we have, hypothetically, again, about a 50-50 split in a class, will that class that's in school go all four days? Or are we going to split, still split it down, which means we may only have five people in each class? So is it possible for them to go full-time, the four days, if in fact, it's a smaller class?
So Mrs. Sullivan, all I got was, is it possible for them to go four days or four days, if it's a smaller class? Can you say that again?
To go the four days. Say there's only ten, say there's only ten children left, that are going to go in-person to school. Would they, would they go the four days?
Ah, I can't answer that now, you have, really have to put those surveys out, and see what our numbers, our numbers show us, but I mean, that's an interesting question, one that I wrote down.
Thank you.
So I believe I saw, I saw Gabby, and then Mrs. Byrd after Gabby.
Hi, I just had a quick question about, it had to do with the transportation, and like driving people. Are people, like seniors or juniors with their licenses, going to be allowed to drive to school, since there's going to be, like, to try to get people off of the buses, or is it still going to be, like parking spots are still going to be reserved only for like senior ambassadors, and kids in MSA and A-Lab? Or are we going to try to get more people to drive to school, in order to like, get less people to take the bus?
Another great question, and one that is really being researched right now. Again, depends on the numbers that we get, and so we can see, you know, how many kids will be coming to school, how many parking spots that we have, but great question, and it is in the queue of research right now.
Thanks for that question. We have not allowed seniors to drive generally in the past, for safety reasons. But here, we have a situation where driving may in fact improve safety. So it's definitely a good question, and I have thought about that. It may, it may be a year, or it may be a time that, that we're going to move towards that. Mrs. Byrd?
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. I have a few questions. In regards to our special education students, particularly students that are in self-contained classrooms, how is this AABB schedule going to work for them? And also, the nature of self-contained classroom, our professionals and our teachers, a lot of time... a lot of time are instructing hand-over-hand instruction, and, um, you know, it's very active. They're doing ABA practices, how will they do that with masks on? And what assurances do we have to keep our staff and students safe in these closed settings? Um, and also, another question is in regards to, I heard the comment that students will be bringing in their own PPP and hand sanitizer, and if they don't have it, then it will be provided. What will be that process? Will teachers have to request hand sanitizer? Because I'm, uh, concerned, just the nature of the situation, you know, some classrooms are probably going to be flying through hand sanitizer. How do they get it? Who do they request it from? Cause I know we've had shortages of copy papers in some buildings. And I don't want, um, teachers to have to go out and purchase these products on their own with their own money. And finally, um, just thinking about Marita's question, Ms. Sullivan's question, with, if we did have numbers, say at fifty percent capacity, uh, I don't, I don't know if we'd be able to increase the days in school, although that would be awesome. But I'm thinking that if we have fifty percent in school versus fifty percent virtual, we still have to teach one hundred percent of our students. So there wouldn't be time for teachers to be able to accommodate more days in school with the students as well as accommodating the, the at-home students. So while it, it would be fantastic unless we double our staff, I can't see how, uh, that would change.
May I make a comment? May I made a comment on that for Christie, Mrs. Byrd?
Uh, yeah.
If we have A, B students, but instead we have just, we have two days A, two days B, we would just have A, B all four days if we had a lower amount. So it would still be the same amount that the teacher would be teaching. She would be teaching four days a week, uh, you know, four and a half hours.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a couple, couple couple other things that try to, um, for, for Mrs. Byrd if we can.
Mr. Santilli, you've been working with the Special Ed, um, Supervisors regarding, um, a lot of these concerns. Are you able to, uh, give some feedback this evening?
Yes, absolutely, uh, great question, Mrs. Byrd, um, it's a conversation we've been having, um, uh, quite often over the last few weeks with the Special Ed Supervisors. One of the things I can tell you is that, um, a lot of those decisions are not gonna, it's, it's going to be coupled with, obviously, the survey results in regards to if parents are going to choose all virtual option or the hybrid, um, in conjunction with, and one of the things we've been focusing on is, is looking at, um, students and their IEPs uh, in relation to related services, not necessarily just focusing on self-contained students, but really the related services that students, um, uh, should be provided. Uh, and obviously, we're, we're coming up with, um, plans, uh, in conjunction with all those things. There's a lot of moving parts, as you know, um, but our hope is that, uh, like everything else, as things continue to come together, we're to be able to, uh, develop a plan that's gonna be able to best meet the needs of those students, um, with that focus in mind of related services.
Okay, thank you so much, I just have a follow-up to that, um. So with related services in mind, that kind of pairs with the, uh, MD rooms because a lot of those students do have OT, speech, um, et cetera, physical therapy. So in, say, a speech therapy session, will there be a barrier between the student and the speech therapist? Or with a paraprofessional doing, um, one-on-one intervention, will there be barriers in these MD rooms? Because the nature of some of the, um, learning differences that our kids have, you know, things can get messy sometimes. So that's, that's really specifically what I'm asking. What are we, what have we set up for classrooms, MD classrooms in particular, to keep the safety of our students and staff one hundred percent in mind? What do we already have in place?
So, um, there's actually, uh, multi-level support that's gonna be in place. I've, I've, uh, looked at everything, and, and we've been working with the business office to, um, order ClearView masks, for instance, um, which are definitely a high priority for us for a lot of different reasons, um, to best service, you know, our students, whether through speech services or our MD classrooms with the like. Um, in addition, um, combination of, uh, different layers. So for instance, not just the ClearView mask, but a best practice and through CDC guidelines is also if we feel there's a need in some of our classrooms, um, then, uh, staff would be provided a face shield as well, for instance. So it'd be, uh, both would be worn, a face shield and also a, a mask. Um, and then also, you mentioned barriers, um, and that is something else that we are looking into as well. Uh, we did pick out a few different, um, possibilities that would meet our needs. Um, some that actually allow for interaction between the barrier and some that would be more solid. Uh, so those are all things that are part of these conversations, to best meet the needs of not just the students, but more importantly, our staff. We realize that, you know, our MD classrooms, um, like many of our other classrooms as well, um, you know, the needs vary. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it's about the health and safety of the students and staff. And, um, you know, we're, we're trying to get all those different supplies in. Uh, as you know, there's a lot of challenges with that too, um, but we are, we're working in that direction, that's part of our plan. Uh, we just actually also started some in-person. Uh, I know that Dr. Gruccio informed the board that we're starting some in-person student testing. Um, any, any of the testing that we needed to do, um, previously, uh, and, and we completed virtually. Uh, but we are starting to now move towards, um, you know, doing some in-person in the month of August. And obviously, the plan that we put into place, very similar to what I just mentioned, a lot of those parameters are, are there to, uh, keep kids safe and students safe as well.
Great, thank you so much, I'm sure many parents, uh, are very appreciative of that, thank you so much.
Very good, I think I saw, uh, Mr. Ellis.
Okay, I'd like to, first thing, um, this, tonight, you're all set, let me, it's probably when you go home. You've been working so hard, long hours, keep up the good work, and I know it's hard on the family. My thing is, like I said, the teachers, the teachers, two, three o'clock, push out till five in the evening. Are they gonna have an opportunity to join, and teachers are also excited, by going to decorate, that we do have in school? Will it be time for them to go into their classroom and decorate? Also, are my teach, are the teachers really prepared with online materials, math, reading? Um, um, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
You're really broken up, Mr. Ellis.
Can you hear me? Hello? All right. See why I don't like this online stuff? Um, like I said, did you hear anything I said?
I see if you can unmute this, um. Hold on one second, Mr. Ellis, if you can hold on one second, Mr. Ellis, we're gonna get you. You have to unmute your screen, yep. Unmute in front of you. The little mouse, yep. We're gonna get there, don't worry.
All right, for, yeah.
There you go.
This is a mess, first, I'd like to thank the administrators, the staff and everybody for your hard work, cause I know your family don't even know who you are, because you putting in hours is unbelievable, and it has to be noticed by all. Uh, I just wanted to make sure, like I said, our teachers, they love the school, they love teaching. They get off at two forty-five, three o'clock, but most of the teachers never leave before four, five, six o'clock in the evening. Just wanna make sure they're excited about coming back to school, their classroom. Will they have time to go and visit the classroom, set up the classroom? Also, do they really have materials for the online, the math, the reading? Who's in charge of making sure the teachers have online materials for these kids? Um, you know, it's, it's like, we need to, I know every year we have a meet and greet, and everybody come back to school and kumbaya and all that stuff. We need to have some kind of trial run. Or maybe we could plan like the two days where we used to have the big conference for the welcome back to teachers. Maybe we can have like a mock run for the teachers to really get accustomed and, and comfortable with this online stuff. Because the way we look at it now, we don't know what the governor's gonna say, in-person, online, whatever. If we could try to figure out a way that the teachers could have a mock run, you know, that first week or whatever, I think that'd really be helpful. And I can't wait to get off this computer.
Okay, we thank you for, I, I think we have that covered, I, I'll, I'll let you go ahead, Kim.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ellis, um, thank you, uh, for recognizing all, um, and having a, a thumb on the heartbeat of, uh, you know, the, the work that our teachers put in, uh, to, to enforce their students each and every day. Um, Ms. Moss can shed some light on that. I, I know we have, um, professional development opportunities, um, and a plan in place for, uh, making sure that, um, you know, people are familiar with what has to be done. Ms. Moss?
Yeah, Mr. Ellis, we, we definitely did a lot of investigating in March, you know, on the run of how to use some online materials and how to best serve. We've been working really hard with the PD Committee all summer and providing professional development for teachers, um, as well as those lunch and learns back in the spring to how, like, how to not let go of our best practices within this virtual world that we're living in. And we're continuing to work on that as we build kind of what we want this to look like, as I was explaining to Ms. Summer earlier. Um, and, you know, I think with Dr. Gruccio extending the start date, that's the idea, is to give us more time with teachers in September, those first few days, to ensure that dependent on the framework that we established today and the plan moving forward, we're able to have clear direction and expectations and provide teachers with enough time and support to deliver it. And that was one of the big perks of this plan that we, that, that's being, um, proposed in the framework with the virtual for all day, because not only does that virtual day allow for students to meet as a whole class with their teacher, but it also allows us to have some extra planning time for teachers, e, extra time to collaborate, plan, and, uh, receive professional development to, to do all the things that you're saying, because you're correct. It's a lot, and everyone is stretched, and people are working twenty-four-seven, and we wanna make sure that we're supporting as much as possible moving forward.
Thank you very much, o, other board members? Anything at all, any other comments, questions from other board members?
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd's hand is up, I'm not sure if you can see her on your screen, cause we have a lot of people today.
I have on tile, but I don't see a hand up, but I'll trust your word for it.
There's too many people on, need to see everybody. Miss Guy, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, I see you.
I see her, but I
I'm coming. I had to unmute, I had to unmute my microphone, I'm sorry, it was, it was fighting me. So I just wanted to say that, I was thinking back to, um, transportation. Um, I, I, I just kind of foresee that, uh, when parents opt out of transportation, um, I think there's gonna be some, some carpooling that may take place with parents. Or request to do carpooling, and maybe our parents wanna be allowed to request to change the day or the group that they've been placed in? Cause I just can kind of foresee that that could possibly be a request that could be made by a parent and, and like far as the district, where do we kind of stand on those requests for switching, um, the group that they, that they're in, if they're A group or B group, or what have you? Cause I think some parents may say, I'm gonna carpool with my neighbor, or I'm gonna have someone else watching my child for me. Um, that was just something I thought maybe we could possibly be inundated with. And, um, the other question, not, I don't think it's the question so much, it's more as a, um, in reference to the, to the teaching staff. Um, I, I do know that there, no one personally came to me and said it, but I know that there's been, um, a lot of concern amongst the teachers in reference to returning back to school. Um, I know that there's been, you know, correspondence that have been sent from, at, at least for Atlantic County, there's been correspondence sent to, um, the governor or, uh, county superintendent in reference to a lot of the teachers' concerns about returning and, um, I guess pushing for the one hundred percent virtual start in the fall. So I didn't know if that was something that, um, central administration, I'm, I'm probably sure may have heard it out there in the, in the world of, um, information. And where do we, you know, where do we stand if that, if that happens where, you know, they say, hey, listen, we, you know, we want a hundred percent virtual, and, and I don't know if this is for all the teachers that feel this way, I'm not, I didn't take a poll or anything like that, but I know that's out there, and I know that, um, a lot of them are concerned about their safe, you know, their return to school, and some people, you know, there have been information put out there that there's been a request made to, for a hundred percent virtual start in September. I don't know if, if we were aware of that, specifically Atlantic County. Could you hear me? You could, okay.
Well, we heard, I, and I guess I'll go, uh, I'll take the second one, and I, I'll let, Kim take the first one. So again, um, I, I wanna make sure everyone is clear. The board evening, we are not deciding whether there's gonna be virtual instruction or not in the fall. The governor and the Department of Education is making that decision.
Understood.
But, I mean, I, I'm certainly aware of the concerns of teachers, and they're valid.
Okay.
And so I'll, you know, I'll, I'll go.
No, I understand why we're here tonight to have, and the plan, and I understand it's requested, I totally get that part. I'm just saying that there has been information, there's been, you know, correspondence from the, you know, from the, the teachers' representation that, hey, listen, this is what we want. So I'm just putting it out there to see that this is something that's happening, or, you know, at least that's how some, um, staff members are feeling. And just, you know, I know they can't, you know, can't, the decision being made is made by the governor, but I think it's just something to, food for thought for, you know, moving forward as we plan, and even anticipation that if some people may not return, you know, if we have the students show up and we don't, and we may not have people that are there because of, you know, a gamut of reasons, whether it's, is this the health conditions, whether it's, you know, um, you name it. I just think that we need to also, and I know you've been doing Plan A, B, C through Z in preparation for all the things we don't even know about yet. But, um, I just wanted to put that, put that out there.
Understood, got it. And so, uh, I'm gonna let, uh, Kim chime in on the, uh, on the carpooling. I guess there's a couple of moving, uh, parts there, no pun intended, but
Yeah, absolutely, there's a lot of moving parts there. Um, as you know, with district our size, um, we, we're gonna do our best, um, with cohorting, um, families first. Um, you know, friends, neighbors, um, all that, that, that's gonna be difficult. Um, you know, I, I'll have Samantha speak to you about the, just the intricacies of scheduling twenty-four-hundred kids at the high school, um, with over twenty-four thousand, I think she said, course selection. So, um, you know, we're gonna do our best for families, that we promise, that we have a tool in Infinite Campus that we could do, do that. Personally, carpooling, I have a problem with. Um, o, only because social distancing, um, you know, has to be put into effect there. Um, we call it cross-pollinating when it comes to our athletic pods and our marching band pods. Right now, um, and I'm just gonna do like a service, public service announcement right here. Um, right now, our students, um, for workouts are placed in pods, groups of ten. And when they come to us, they check in, they get their health checked, they wear their masks, they go to their practice spot, and they practice. Um, and we keep them in their, their small group, if you will, learning community for the health, safety, and welfare and the COVID, um, contact, contacting, um, process. But when they leave campus, and they, then, and someone from Pod One gets in a car with someone with Pod Two, they just now cross-pollinate it, when, that's what we call, and then, then we hear that sometimes the kids are getting together after practice, and they're going to someone's house to go swimming, or they're going to the beach. Um, and that goes for employees too. We all have to be cognizant of what we're doing off the field outside the school because o, our habits and our practices there affect each other, one another, us when they come back to, to school, to the pod, to the car, to the, so you see what I'm saying? So it's important that we're following the government orders of, right now, wear your mask, social distance, uh, use hand sanitizer, wipe your areas, um, these are just
These are just new rituals, if you will, that each and every person has to, to do to keep themselves safe and others. That's the other piece. Let's have each other's back. Let's look, let's look out for each other. So that's my personal, personal spin on it. So, but I understand, you know, that we may have those situations. But first and foremost, I know we can accommodate families in cohorting, but I don't know how far we can get into neighbors, family, friends and all that. So Samantha, I know you're on there somewhere. I don't, I don't see you, but I know you're there. If you just want to share a little bit about the intricacies of scheduling in your world.
Sure, I'm here. Like, this is something that I say all the time. It would bring me, it would, I mean, I would love nothing more than to be able to customize, itemize and individualize every schedule that came across my desk. But you're right, it's not 24,000. That's a little too much. It's about 21,000 course requests. So, yeah, we, I mean, we really work really hard to try to minimize as many conflicts as we can and to try to really, you know, give every student exactly what they want. But there's a limit to that, right? There's, it's just not, you know, possible to do every little last thing. But I can tell you that we work very hard to do as much of it as we can.
Thank you very much, Sam. Great. Other board members, questions? I don't see hands.
Mr. President, this is Lou.
Lou and then Marita.
Piggyback on, to piggyback on Mrs. Gilbert Floyd's comment. Have we surveyed our teaching staff yet as to whether or not they would like to return or have concerns about returning? Do we know yet if everybody's planning on coming back or not? Or is that part of the process and will be happening in the near future? Or if there is that concern, I believe not just our county sent up a petition letter to the, to the governor. I believe NJEA is doing the same thing as the state organization. So there are concerns about, you know, and we all know that, whether or not we're really going to be any in person or not. But of course, tonight, we're just worried about the plan. But I know that, I don't know if you've done anything regarding the professional staff yet and they're interested in coming back.
Pete, I can take that for you. Dr. Charlton, can you share the questionnaire that you placed out? It's, I know it's exactly the answer, but there was some communication with staff.
Yes. Mr. Delabarka, I did send out kind of a survey to gather information from staff for medically compromised reasons, but I also had a lot of conversations back and forth with people for a number of different reasons as well. I had approximately 100 people reach out to me. Obviously, I can't go into detail because it's people's individual situations. But, you know, the, I think the common thread is that they were all waiting to see what the expectations of them were going to be returning to onsite instruction before they could really make that decision. But there, there are people that are concerned. I had about 100 people get back to me in one way or another.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
And I understand, Lou, the concerns are real and I share them. Mrs. Sullivan?
I'd like to piggyback on all of that and possibly when you're getting your questionnaires answered, Dr. Gruccio. If, in fact, we have some classes that can have all students in it, another teacher can take over all the virtual students. So we may be able to split up that way. Teachers that, you know, have 10 children in a class and then a teacher that does not want to be in a classroom can teach their students virtually plus their own, something like that. So that's a really movable prototype, I guess. But it's something to think about, but you'll have to get all those surveys back in.
Yes, thank you. We will be taking all into consideration. Yep.
Any other board member comments or questions? Okay. All right. So we're, we're now at the point, if, if there's nothing else from administration, we're going to go ahead. Is there anything else from administration? Let me just see if there is.
Not regarding the plan. Yeah, not regarding the plan, but I do have updates before you take action on the next few things.
Okay. All right. So why don't you go ahead with that then and before we'll, then we'll look for a motion for 4.1 through 4.3. So go ahead, Chandra.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. So on the agenda is the grant application for the digital divide. We were notified the end of July that we were going to be entitled, tentatively entitled to $663,000 to close the digital divide for basically providing Wi-Fi and technology to students and families who were not able to have that. So we can go virtual at any moment. There was a survey done for the school back in June, tentatively asking, did you meet the needs? Do you need more technology? And we said yes. Schools who said yes got a chance to apply for this grant. At the time the grant was, this grant was proposed, at the same time, there was another bill proposed by Senator Ruiz that said, let's get the technology in the hands of the kids. We'll worry about funding later. And that was mentioned at our last meeting, that bill saying, hey, schools will have to pay this back over time through other funds. I did check with the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials. We had a meeting following, last week, following the public meeting. And I asked, how come we haven't heard about this as an association? They usually keep us abreast. And I was told you didn't hear about it because it's not, not an issue and it was dropped. That the state did find funding by the time the grant was sent out to the schools and we are not going to be responsible for paying it back. So that was good news. So this grant application would be submitted, applying for hotspots with 12 months included for families who don't have Wi-Fi as well as additional Chromebook purchases to meet the needs so that as we go into September or any time we have to go 100% virtual, students can log in simultaneously instead of just sharing the same Chromebook as they may have done in the past. So that's the first update. Second update has to do with concessions. We did put out proposals for photographer this year. We had three bids, three proposals returned back to us. I am recommending as a business administrator, after going through all the packets, to the award, to go to, I'm going to say the name wrong. Let me go look up, sorry. I have a brain block. They have on their packet, it says, don't blink, the kids grow too fast. So I keep calling them, don't blink. But it's actually Barksdale School Portraits. Barksdale came in with proposals, the most comparable and reasonable for our families in a proper township. So that caught my eye initially. But on top of being the most reasonable for our families with their packages, they also do provide the district with some concessions. Any underclassman package, 20%, concessions to the board and any senior package is 10% concessions to the board. They also do student IDs and staff IDs for free. They offer almost like a school directory with, with pictures and alphabetical order by grade. So many perks are listed in the attachment, if you guys want to actually look at that. This is my recommendation to award to them. I did confirm if we award tonight, they can come the week of August 17th and August 24th. And as soon as we tell them go tomorrow morning, they will be putting the email blast out to notify parents on how to go to their website and make the appointments. So that was all, I met all the needs that we asked them to do, as well as the schedule I sent. We worked with all the principals to get the schedule of when they usually got pictures, you know, spring, fall timelines. You know, the high school being more immediate need than the middle school, so that the IDs can be done. And they're able to meet all the timelines. They are a national company. They do have 250 schools in New Jersey. So after reference checks, I think the best reference check I got was, you know, was shocking to me that they're not a family-owned business because they treat you as if they are. And that was the feeling I got speaking to them. So that was really nice. Has a small customer service feeling, but they are a national company. So my recommendation is to award them the concession agreement. Thank you, Mr. Castellano.
Very good. And I'm glad to hear we'll be able to get underway with our, especially with our senior pictures. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion for 4.1 through 4.3.
This is Mr. Price.
May I have a motion?
This is Mr. Price. I do have a question before we vote. Am I coming through? I have a question on 4.3.
Yes.
Yes.
I would suggest we make a motion in a second and then ask any questions?
All right. I have a question about 4.3, so I make...
I will make a motion. Mrs. Sullivan?
Okay, so we have motion and second, so now we'll, we'll have discussion. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. I'd like to discuss 4.3, the concession agreement for school photography and services. I did take a look at the proposal and I have a couple of questions. First, I'd like to know what were we paying before? Is this going to be costing more or is it going to be less or about the same? Number two, I want to know, obviously, are they local or are they local staff? You know, where are they coming from? Is it, can we go to their office or is it something that they have to come to us for onsite? What other schools in our area, Atlantic County, using this company? Are there any in Atlantic County that are using them now? Also, I looked and saw something about a 10% commission. It was kind of written in with handwriting. What is that 10% commission? Is that for the photographers or is it something that we're going to be billed? I didn't quite, wasn't clear on that. So I hope I came through, but that's my three questions.
I got it all. Yep, I heard you all, Mr. Price. Thank you for that. So cost to the district is absolutely nothing. This is called a concession agreement because you're basically saying, who's going to give me the best deal versus a bidding or proposal process that says, who's going to cost me the least? So this is almost like a bid in opposite order. So we have never paid for photography services. The reason we say concession is most photographers give back to the schools, be it in monetary donations or in other items like, for example, posters in your school buildings. There's several offerings that they may do for schools. So it never cost us anything in the past. In our last photographer, we got no concessions. So this was a win to get 20% concession from, you know, underclassman photos. And then the 10% you're referring to is on the senior portrait package because I didn't see a percentage on there. But after discussing with her, she did concede to say 10% for senior photographers. It would not be 20% as I thought it might be. And that was actually in the agreement that we've, you know, drawn up since. As far as local, the two references I checked that were most local is Upper Township and Middle Township. They were in Cape May County, not Atlantic County. They had a lot of surrounding Gloucester County, Ocean County and all around. But those two business administrators are also in our Atlantic and Cape May County JIF Joint Insurance Fund. So I went to them as a quick phone call, as well as the other ones that they had on their references. For example, Upper Darby, which is up in Pennsylvania, 12,000 student district, just for me to feel more comfortable about the size that they can handle. But they do have 250 schools in New Jersey of the just under 600 that we have in the state. So they do have a nice market in here. The other schools in Atlantic County I answered, local I answered, commission cost. I think I got them all. Do you have anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Very good. So it's not us paying a commission, they're paying us concessions, just so we, we're clear. All right. So motion, motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on 4.1 through 4.3? Hearing none, may we have roll call, please?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis? I see him. I'm going to unmute yourself. Yep.
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price? Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
And Mr. Erd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Oh, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, did I miss you? I'm sorry.
I'm here.
This is virtual roll calling. Thank you.
That's all right. I say yes.
Good job. Thank you.
Okay. So unanimous, and I want to thank everyone for, for passing our plan. And again, hard work, the time, the effort that went into putting this plan together and the effort that we've all put forward to listen. And part of that was done this evening. So before I ask for a motion to adjourn, we will have our committees, we have at least one committee is going to be virtual Thursday. Then we will meet at Alder Avenue Tuesday night. We'll get out details on that in advance of that. And I'm just going to again ask everyone, board members, administration, everyone, teachers, staff, parents, community. We need to continue to work together. There has never been a greater challenge ahead of us. I know we can meet it if we continue to work together. So I want to thank everyone again for the hard work. Before a motion to adjourn, Kim, did you have anything?
I sure do. Thank you so much. What a sigh of relief. And Mr. Castellano, you said it all. I mean, it was absolutely a team effort from students, staff, administration, Board of Education, parents, concerned citizens. And it just shows you that when you work as a team, you win in the end. So thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate it. What we'll do from now is we'll submit the plan tomorrow and we will continue our planning with the logistics and the intricacies based on the feedback that we have been receiving. And again, I appreciate everyone's feedback and support. So thank you and good night.
Excellent. All right. May I have them?
Before you close, just that one reminder, the Atlantic County, New Jersey School Boards meeting is next Monday night. I think you got invited to sign up by, Shonda sent a reminder out to everyone. So if you have not signed up yet, get in touch with Chandra. And next Monday night, we have our countywide meeting with New Jersey School Boards.
Very good. Yep, I will be there. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
This is Mr. Price. I'll make that motion.
Barbara Salagi, second.
Okay, Mr. Price, Mrs. Salagi, show of hands. Unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Good night.